One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we call the roll please?
Schmuckel.
Here.
Barshaf.
Here.
Agustinelli.
Here.
And Korn.
Here.
It's noted that McManus, McCumber, and Dool are absent and excused.
We have a quorum present, and the first item on our agenda is public comment. If there's anyone who would care to give public comment to the board at this point, please come to the podium and be so kind as to give us your name and address. Close public comment, come back to the board for review and approval of the agenda and statements of conflict. Any conflicts of interest today?
Make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Support.
We have a motion and support to approve the agenda as presented. Questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Item three is the consent calendar.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with in one board motion without discussion. Any member of the board, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therfrom and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single board action adopting the consent calendar. This evening you have the minutes from July 9th, 2024, regular meeting, and July 30th, special meeting. Recommend approval. Bills, the general fund, $477,982.96. Gordy Frazier, Developers Escrow Fund, Stormwater Reviews, Utility Plan Review Oversight and Closeout, $14,075. General Utilities, $16,500. And Park Funds, DNR Trust Fund, $6,375, for a total of $36,950. Recommend approval. MTT update, receive and file. Schedule a public hearing for September 10th, 2024, to establish the property tax millage rate to be levied to support the township's 2025 general and fire fund accounts. Recommend approval. And consideration of Hammond Road Storage Building Sanitary Sewer and Water Main Extension Closeout and Turnover Documents. Recommend approval.
Is there any member of the board who would like to remove anything from the consent calendar for discussion? Is there any member of the public? Or staff?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Support.
We have a motion and support to adopt the consent calendar as presented. Are there any questions? Comments? Could we have a roll call vote please?
Agustinelli.
Yes.
Schmuckel.
Yes.
Barshaf.
Yes.
And Korn.
Yes. Next item on our agenda. Items removed from the consent calendar, none. Correspondence, none. Reports, County Commissioners' report.
Brad Jewell, Grand Travers County Board Commissioner, Vice Chair, District 4.
Lauren Flynn, District 2.
We've had a couple meetings since the last time we've been in front of you, but last Friday we had a special meeting, and on that special meeting we did make three appointments to the Joint Airport Zoning Board. That's a new board that's being created there. Leonard County will make three appointments also, and then that board makes appointments to, or to, or three?
Yeah, two.
Two or three, I don't remember. It's a big, long deal there. We also did approve the road commission millage to go onto the November ballot. They made a presentation back on July 24th, and there was more questions than answers at the time, so they came back to us last Friday. We also made an appointment to the VA, the local VA board, and Commissioner McAllister had stepped off Parks and Rec for a short term because it's real, he's, this is his busy season and everything, so we did appoint Commissioner Nelson to that Parks and Rec Board for the interim. And then July 24th, we had a long discussion with the Health Department about the statewide sewer code. The state's been working on updating the sewer code, and part of that is, they've talked about is inspections. If we have to do inspections as kind of being proposed, granted it's not finalized yet, we would have to hire nine more sanitarians for the Health Department and everything. And there's approximately 20,000 septic systems in Grand Travers County, and less than a half a percent of them fail every year. So even though in some areas there are problems at times, it's not a huge problem. I mean, any sewer leaking can be a problem, but it's not a huge problem like, like some people are saying and everything. So not saying it doesn't need to be addressed, but it is less than a half a percent of failure in the area and everything. So we're watching that as we go forward, and we're trying to determine if we need to make our own code before the state does, or what's going to be better and everything. But there's, there's a lot that goes into trying to decide this and everything. So, but as we move forward with it, we will keep you guys updated.
There may be some perks or benefits of creating our own code prior to the state doing so, grandfathering us in into some rules so that we do have a little more time to catch up and be prepared and proactive in this department. I just wanted to add that Camp Gray, like I attended the public input session last night. There's about 100 people out there at Besser Hall. Lots of great thoughts and opinions of what can be done there, and John Chase really listened and shared his vision, as well as taking the input from the, the public that was there. So it's exciting to see this moving forward. It was great to be out there last night, it was pretty gorgeous. But we'll be seeing what's going on there. It's going to take time, a lot of time. And that's all I have.
Questions? Comments?
Happy post-primary, everybody. Congratulations, everyone up there.
Thank you.
I'm going to head out to Blair Township, but like always, our contact information is on the website, so if you guys need to get ahold of us, call us, email us, whatever the case may be, and, and we will respond accordingly. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. See you later. Next is the Sheriff's Report. Lieutenant Raska.
The way we collect our stats are still kind of messed up with all the computer programs. The Sheriff Manager is where we gather our stats from, and we still haven't been able to get that washed or get that figured out yet. So, still working on stats. Just some of the things that the CPOs have been up to, we were approached by the Salvation Army last month. They just requested that myself and/or some of the CPOs have lunch with them on Mondays and Wednesdays, some of their clientele, and that's been working out really good. There's young people there, they all ask good questions, and it's, it's, it's been a good thing just to sit with the community, and it's been, it's been good. There's only been a few people that have turned away, a little bit, a little bit afraid of us, but for the most part it's been a good experience. Couple weeks ago, the YMCA requested us to visit the kids camp, and I think we had five different deputies with specialties out there, dive van, drones, our ROV, the kids really enjoyed that. We were just asked to get involved with the sobriety court with District Court, and Deputy St. Croix has agreed to take part in that. So she'll meet every Monday and Tuesday with a sobriety, sobriety court program, and this week was her first week doing that, and it seems to, she's got an open mind to it, and said it'll be a good thing. Child Family Services reached out to us and requested us to have a visit at their new facility, which is the old Pete's Place, and we met with them, and they're just requesting that myself or some of the community police officers stop in and interact with the young people that are being housed at the old Pete's Place. Now it's run by Child and Family Services. Deputy Henges or Deputy Corr, she'll be back at the schools probably next week, just to get familiar with teachers and, and everybody coming back to the schools. And manpower, all the Garfield Township spots have been filled now for quite some time. We are down three, three positions, and we have three people slated to go to the Academy starting in two weeks at NMC, so that's been good. And Chief, I just want to say I had a chance to work with a few of your guys last Thursday. Had a major accident at Keystone and Hammond, and it's a long time since they got dirty, and they did a great job. I mean, phenomenal job, those guys. I was like, this is going to be hectic, and they made quick work of it. But any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the Planning Department report for August 2024.
We got GT Metro Fire Department.
Oh, I was going to skip them.
That's okay, I got to come up here twice tonight, so. The intention was to make this quick. Good evening. In your board packet you have the Grand Travers Metro, Garfield Metro Incident Report Packet. Just highlighting first page, the NFR's incidents, fire incidents. It kind of spilled over, it was a big, busy month, so spilled over to the second page, but the totals for the month of July were 400 incidents within Garfield, 576 within Metro as a whole. Number one incident type that we responded to is our medical assist as, as usual, with 279 in Garfield and 377 in Metro, followed by some canceled, dispatch canceled route at 33, and emergency medical services other 22, and motor vehicles following up that with eight within Garfield, and then five additional ones without injury. Moving over to second page, when you get into the bar graphs, or I'm sorry, the pie charts, again, of that total 576 incidents, 400 or the 69% with, were in Garfield Township. You can see the other two townships there, East Bay coming in at 19% and Acme at 11%, and then just a percentage of calls out of the area. You again have the breakdown by station with the, pretty even between Station 12 and 11 here in Garfield at 25% each, and then 29% for our Station 1, which does, being in the middle there, does see some calls in both Garfield and Acme Township. And then Station 8 coming up at about 14%. Moving on to the EMS complaints for July. Falls again are, always seem to be our highest calls with 55 for the month, difficulty breathing, breathing, shortness of breath following up at 37, our lift assists at 28, and then, you know, falling down to cardiac issues at 21. And then just some general medical type incidents after that. The last page of the report is the overall, just in comparison, 82 in the fall as opposed to 55. And again, that total for EMS calls was 483 for all of Metro as opposed to 342 for Garfield Township. In addition to the incidents, just briefly, just want to report, we did receive a correspondence from the Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity congratulating Metro on being recommended, quote them, "on being recommended for firefighter turnout gear grant funding for our project in the amount of $87,532.38." Now, the key is that we're still awaiting a signed agreement, which will authorize the purchase and the, the ability for us to seek reimbursement, which we can do right away. We've all been assured that we've been awarded that money, but again, they're, they're saying it's not 100% until we get the documents signed from Leo, and then we can go ahead and sign those, and, and we can go ahead and get that gear ordered, which, which is a great thing. So we're excited about that. Additionally, in, in the area of grants, we plan to make application to the Michigan Township Participating Plan for the Risk Reduction Grant. One of the eligible items they have this session is chevroning of vehicles, that's a reflective grid on the back of the vehicles. We, there's a couple of our vehicles that need that. The maximum funding we can request is about $5,000. It should be able to get us about five vehicles, so we're going to make that application, which should be due September 15th. Our new engine is almost complete, we've been talking about it for a long time. We have scheduled the final inspection for August 28th and 29th at the manufacturer in Appleton, Wisconsin. Following a successful inspection, the engine will be delivered to the dealership downstate for appliance installation, and should arrive at Metro within the first few weeks of September. So we're excited about that. Actually, got this after the packets were due, but I do have some photos of the engine that I can leave for you if you're interested. This morning we did close on the partial financing for the, for the new engine with Fifth Third Bank. We closed with them in an amount of $377,000. As you may recall, the remainder of the purchase is going to be financed between Cherryland Electric and USDA at the zero interest loan that they had available. So we're just be waiting on that to get finalized. There were some incidents, just one notable, one structure fire to note in July in Garfield Township on July 15th on Cobalt Street, we had an appliance fire. Metro responded, we were reported of an oven fire in the residence, it was quickly extinguished upon arrival, and there was no reported injuries. Our operations chief, Tony Posey, has been working diligently on our new pre-planning software. It's a product, it's called Flow MSP. He's implemented the program with our officers, pretty excited and enthusiastic about the program because it's going to allow us to conduct many more pre-plans than we've been able to do in the past. We've already said in comparison, now he feels like we're years ahead of where we were. It's going to allow us to provide better information for our crews responding to calls. This will also, once a few more things are buttoned up with CAD, that we'll be able to integrate with CAD so that that information is immediately available on MCTs or iPads as those calls come in when crews are responding. So previously, we're unable to do that, so we're pretty excited about that. It is also something that is recognized and do receive departments who receive ISO credit for having those pre-plans were readily available. So ultimately, the, the most important thing is just to have that information readily available for crews responding, so we're excited about that. But that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions. No?
All good.
All right. See you in a few minutes.
Thanks, Chief.
All right. Now the Planning Department report for August 2024.
Report is in your packet. I just have some additional highlights. Since your last meeting last week, Carl and Mike Green were out at the site, they're working to see the closeout for the, the permits for Beta, and they have got their, or going to be issued their temporary CBO for the, for the main building and for the transfer station. They also did provide a performance guarantee for some of the open space improvements, so it looks like everything is going forward on that project. Also wanted to mention a couple of applications that we've gotten in recently. At the K-1 Carding Center, which is the former Sears, there's, we have the application for High Tops Restaurant, so we finally received their application for site plan review that will amend that, it'll be part of the K-1 Carding Center. Also, you've probably seen, if you've been out at Hammond and Garfield on the southwest corner, you've seen some grading going on. That's where Kingsley Lumber is going to locate their new operations there, so we're going to be initiating a site plan review with them here shortly. And then just, the Planning Commission has been working on an amendment to the R3 zoning district and the zoning ordinance, and that'll be coming to the board here shortly, most likely after they have a public hearing tomorrow evening. So, that's all I have at this time.
Any questions for John? Thank you. Next item is the Treasurers' report, which is, writing? She's on vacation.
Parks and Rec before that, sir.
Apparently no one's going to be here from Parks and Rec, so it is in writing if you wanted to, or anything in the Parks and Rec report you'd like to discuss. We'll move on to the Treasurers' report, which is a lot of numbers. And the Clerks' report is in writing. Last but not least, the Supervisors' report. The Hiring Committee met on the 16th to start the process for hiring a inspector, a plan reviewer. So they'll, that'll be moving along soon, and we assume that'll be in plenty of time with our slightly easier schedule with Carl staying.
Inspector what slash?
Inspector reviewer.
Reviewer, okay, thank you.
Which is what Rich does now, but it'll be a full-time position eventually. We met with the representative from the plumbing and heating services buying the old Beta building, and their plans to develop that, and they seemed to be very positive and moving in the right direction. We didn't have any conflicts.
It's precision plumbing, isn't it? That's buying it.
And I spend a lot of time reading water and sewer reports.
That must be fun.
Oh, and studies. All right, so we'll move on to unfinished business. Item one is consideration of a professional services agreement with Travers Connect.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us. Warren called with Travers Connect, and I'm joined by my colleague Camille Hoysington, who's going to say a few words in a moment. First off, want to thanks, thank you for putting this back on the agenda. I know that we weren't able to attend when it was on the agenda previously, and apologize for the conflict that did, did not allow us to join you at that point. But we do understand that there was some questions that came up, and we wanted to provide a bit more background on some of the work we've do, we've done, and also hopefully helpful, some of the, the prior planning that went into how we're currently structured and the work that we do, much of which was, was frankly influenced by and helped by some involvement directly from Garfield Township. So we did put a summary, kind of an overview in the packet for, for some previewing ahead of time. We'll just touch on a couple of quick things from that material, but really want to make sure that we hopefully address the questions that came up when you discussed this last time, as well as any further questions you might have that, that we can address at this time. On the, kind of the first part of that, that memo, we really tried to go into, again, a bit of a background, how we got to this point, the involvement from our, our private sector and public sector partners that influenced both the, the structure of our organization and also the, the work that we do and our, and our contractual agreements with, with our public sector partners. So I think it's important, one of the things that we highlighted in that was the, the specific role of our Regional Economic Development Organization. So that's the role that Travers Connect serves in the Grand Travers area. Again, going back a bit, this was directly structured in such a way as an alternative to each entity having that work in, in-house, as it were. Rather than having the city and townships and the county each have development staff, specifically, you know, business attraction, business development staff. We were to serve that role. So that's really how the original structure came together. As the strategy was developed through 2019, hopefully you've gotten some value from seeing the, the, the tracking of our, our longer 10-year metrics, the specific development objectives that are, that are outlined in some of our plans, and obviously the, the overall goal, to touch on the family sustaining careers that we collectively as a region agreed was, was kind of the ultimate goal. So I would, I would highlight that the things that were, we were specifically tasked with doing that require public sector investment are really that, kind of that center of that first page, the business attraction, the specific expansion projects for existing employers, and then the development of specific industry clusters. So those three items are the things that were, that were called out both in the strategic plan and in, and in the pre-work that went into it, that require that public sector investment because it's not really the responsibility of any one private sector company to, for example, attract new businesses. So we also can and will do, you know, tailored projects on request, so some of the things that we've done for the township and other, and other entities. But I think it's important to, to note that those, those items I just touched on, the business attraction, expansion projects, and industry clusters are really the core of what the public sector tasked us with doing at the beginning. I also want to touch on, and we, we went into it a little bit in the memo about metrics and tracking, because I know there was discussion last time about our periodic reporting. So one of the things that kind of was traditional in some economic development studies that we, we looked at, and when I say we, I do mean collectively everyone that was involved, both pub, public sector and private sector. There was a, there was a real thought from some public sector officials that looking at kind of per-project metrics can oftentimes be, be gamed, as it were. And so that's where we were, we were asked to really focus on these big, tough, long-term metrics. So those are those five key metrics that are called out on our dashboard that we report on, on an annual basis. Are we growing working age population? Are we growing educational attainment? Are we growing advanced sector jobs? Those, those kinds of things. And are we doing it in such a way that our average total wage goes up as a percentage of the state average wage? And are we, are we producing higher value goods and services? So that's the reason for that tracking, and, and the way that, and the reason that we report on it that way. And then from a standpoint of the, the quarterly reports, you know, business sentiment and growth opportunities is really, again, based on research, what appears to be the best short-term indicator of, you know, trends and direction in economic development. So that's, that's the reason for the, the metrics, tracking, and reporting that we do provide to you. So we wanted to touch on that because we, we know it did come up last time. I'm going to turn it over to Camille for a second because she's the point person on our team and across the region as it relates to those specific business attraction, expansion projects, and the industry cluster development, and then I'll, I'll come back and we can answer any questions you might have. Camille?
Thanks, Warren. Thank you all. So if you turn to page two, and going a little more into detail on the, the business attraction and industry cluster development work that we do, you'll see some examples of how we engage with the private sector specifically, and then some specific examples of businesses, developers, developments, and, and industry groups that we've interacted with over the past year. This includes connecting with prospective new businesses, so businesses that are maybe seeking a new location to locate and establish themselves in the Traverse City region. So it's important to note that all of our, our services are very case-specific and include assisting a business with whatever it is that they may need. So we meet them where they are. It could be identifying a development site, identifying real estate that they, their real estate needs. It could be their manufacturing needs, and finding a contract manufacturer for parts that they may need to, that they would need to develop their business. It could be finding local or regional customers. It could be finding funding to, to further the development of their, of their business. It could be hard to find staff. So very often we'll connect them with NMC and their training programs, for example. And then it's important to note that our work spans across the board in terms of industry as well, and it spans geographies. So it could be a business seeking a new US headquarters, it could be a business expansion from downstate or out of state, it's, it's across the board. And then our work spans across business stages as well and business types, so it could be startups, nonprofits, corporates, or sole owner consultancies. And then in addition to responding to those case-specific requests, incoming requests, we also focus our efforts on the intentional business attraction and that industry cluster development that we were touching on. So looking at industry clusters that we've identified as having great potential for the region. A really great example of that is our freshwater and marine innovation work. Last week, we held a e-boat demo event at El Capids Marina. We had six electric boat or alternatively fueled boats. We had six electric boats, or alternatively-fueled boats, in the water, and blue tech companies present, as well as some overwater drone companies, so bringing in that advanced aerial mobility sector as well. We had representation from all over. We had a Swedish company, a UK company. We even had a company there that is seeking to locate their business from the West Coast to Michigan. They want to develop their first boat prototype right here in Michigan and set up a Traverse City headquarters. And those are really important, because those will create high-paying, year-round, skilled jobs for the region. And so then finally, we assist these prospective businesses with all aspects of setting up their business. So it's not just the, you know, what I just mentioned about setting up a business, the traditional things. We also help them with what it's like to live here. So through our talent attraction programming through Michigan's Creative Coast, we can help them, them and their employees, learn about how to find housing and what schools to send their kids to, where they should live, finding, you know, finding their community and finding their networks to, which is a really important part of living here and setting up their business here. So happy to provide any more details on any of these specific projects on page two. Either myself or Warren can take those questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Camille. So we wanted to, again, give a, provide an overview. Hopefully, we've addressed some of the questions that came up several weeks ago when we weren't able to join you. I would just say, kind of in closing, you know, we're very proud to be able to do, you know, whether it's industrial park feasibility studies or business surveys, but we do hope that you can view the investment from Garfield Township in a broad investment in everything that we do that we've just talked about, both the kind of one-off or special projects, as well as the long-term work that we're trying to do to grow the economy. So with that, I mean, it's really a matter of hoping, frankly, that, you know, we want to provide value, and we want certainly to hear feedback if we aren't, you know, we aren't hitting the mark, right? So that's what we're here to address, and would welcome any questions or concerns or thoughts that you have.
Need a motion? I don't have any questions.
Molly has a question.
I think, Molly always has a question. I think what the board was kind of struggling with a little bit was how many jobs, how many employees, what are you bringing into Garfield Township? The meat and potatoes of those kinds of things. You know, I understand creating a wonderful atmosphere for people to come in and helping them find housing, and looking at more innovative ways to do things, but when we get right down to it, the investment that this township is making, is, do you guys measure, okay, I brought in 5,000 jobs into your township in the last six months, or I'm bringing, this is a business that's coming into your township, and this is a business that's going to be here and stay, so that meat and potato is part of it? Do you?
So, again, I think that the key thing there is, we do track job creation and job growth, but we track it regionally. And there's a reason for that. I can, so I can go back and tell you that, you know, two and a half years ago, we worked directly with a company called Eotech, right, that set up operations in Garfield Township and had significant growth, you know, plans, and are continuing to develop those job growth plans. They make, you know, hunting and military equipment. But really, the task we were given was to think regionally, and to provide regional growth statistics. And I believe it was, don't quote me on this, but I believe it was actually Grand Traverse County Commission, when we were early stage, they said, you know, "We don't want to hear how many jobs got created at ABC Company, because you can't prove that that wouldn't have happened anyway," right? We want to know that our, you know, our working age population, which is the big scary number that was declining, starts to increase. We want to know that, you know, these big numbers start to change. So that's what we were, you know, we were tasked with tracking, so that's what we tend to focus on. It's also a matter of, you know, one year, we can talk about a project that landed in Garfield Township. The next year, it might be the Lear, you know, battery plant that's on Woodmere, but it's in the city, right? So I don't have something to, like, show Garfield Township that year, but I can say whether it's a business in Garfield Township or a business in Traverse City, regionally having, you know, for example, in the Lear Corporation expansion, you know, 79 advanced manufacturing jobs paying a pretty good wage is probably good, even if it's in, you know, across the border in Traverse City, it's good for Garfield Township as well, right? So that's, we're always trying to highlight, as Camille just did, each individual project, but we don't track, here's the numbers for Garfield Township this quarter or this year. We do do it regionally. I hope that answers your question. And I'm not saying that that's the only way to do it, but that's how we were tasked with doing it.
I think that was the question that the board was kind of asking. What specifically are you doing here?
Right.
And that's the thing, do we want to contribute to this big ball that makes it a great place to be?
Mm-hmm.
Which is what you're doing.
Right.
And not worry so much about the, okay, I'm going to bring in ABC, whatever, that's going to have 100 jobs.
Yeah. And I would say that, again, there's, you know, there's many ways to do this, and we're trying to develop the most effective way for our region. We did try to follow best practices. So in fact, it's interesting, this morning, I met with the consultant that actually helped us back in 2019 develop this plan. They happen to be in the region for another event. And so we were talking about, you know, because we're kind of halfway through that 10-year big picture, and we've got some good numbers to show, and we've got some success, we've got a lot of projects that have come to fruition. But we also used existing models. So for example, a recent, the Trade Mission trip that I was recently on with the state delegation, my counterpart from Detroit was also on that, right? And so the Detroit Regional Partnership actually has 11 counties at this point, and several townships, and, you know, several direct investment from, you know, the city of Detroit, Warren, Southfield, et cetera, right? And they invest collectively in their regional economic development entity, not just across, you know, townships, but across counties. So we've tried to follow those types of models, you know, the right place in Grand Rapids has the same model. They have direct investment from Grand Rapids, but also Kent County and other counties and townships around their region.
Thanks.
I think if we can look back, before we even came into office in 2008, the township regularly contributed, and we did for many years, until our auditors raised the question of, what is the specific service that the township is receiving? That it was great to give to a community effort, but we needed to see something, which we have in this agreement, and I do think throughout that process, what we were contributing came back to us. I mean, I felt like we got good service, we had, you know, somebody who was listening, you know, a lot of people won't call the township or call, you know, a local government and complain, but they will call the Chamber of Commerce. So it's kind of interesting. We got information that way from them that helped us maintain relationships.
If I may also just add one last thing, you know, we've talked about kind of some fun, exciting, bigger projects, right? But the blocking and tackling, right, we also want to be there for you on that. So if it's a plumbing and heating company looking to move into a new building, we're there to help, you know, that local business as well. And sometimes that, you know, we help them move forward with a project, sometimes we help them understand why that project may not fit, right? There's a lot that would be needed to change the rail system and use it for different services, right? So trying to help the business understand the complexity and how they need to work with their public sector partners in that complexity is also something we try to do.
I have one question. It's just this agreement says entered on the first day of July.
Well, plans have changed.
Yeah, I mean, do we need to change that now to say today's date? Because we didn't do it on the first of July.
We can certainly do that.
Okay. I would just feel better about it.
Okay.
Make a motion?
Please.
I'll make a motion that we direct Supervisor Corn to sign and enter into a professional services contract between Garfield Township and Traverse Connect for three years, starting today, August 13, 2024, in the amount that's listed in the contract.
Support.
We have a motion in support to enter into the agreement. Are there any questions or comments? Could I get a roll call vote, please?
Barshap?
Yes.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
And Corn?
Yes. As approved, thank you.
The other question I have too, because of this, in here, it says that we were going to make the payment no later than July 31 of 2024, so that needs to be changed also, please.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm a stickler on dates, sorry.
There's actually one more date in there that we'll update as well.
Okay.
Language to jump.
Thank you so much.
All right. The next item is consideration of West Wind's request for a down payment exemption. We brought this forward, and the board felt it would be appropriate to have a policy rather than do it in a random way. So we looked at the Ridge's 45 project so far, in between sewer and water systems and benefit fees, they are invested to the tune of several million dollars in sewer and water. So when there's a 20% down payment required for the financing, but that total amount is 10% of their, less than 10% of their infrastructure costs already spent, we feel it would be appropriate to allow that. It's a tough time in that business. Housing costs are, the only way it's going to work for them at this point is that they can average the cost for the start of the project several years ago and the finish of the project, and in that average, they'll have a number that they can rent, and, you know, they can get the rents, they will keep them in the black. But new projects, there's no room. There's simply no room to work.
I make a motion that the township waive the typical requirement of 20% down payment for sewer and capital cost. If the down payment amount exceeds less than 10% of the total water and sewer infrastructure cost, expand, expended to date of project for, we want to put this, the Ridge 45 apartments?
West Wind construction.
Thank you. West Wind.
I'll support, then I got a question.
Certainly.
Okay, are we creating a policy that will provide some possible relief for other people in the future? What are we, are we going to put that into our policy?
That is the policy. This is the draft of the policy. We'll have a formal version.
But it won't say specifically, and this policy does not say specifically for that project?
Correct.
But this is the policy that we're going to adopt?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Support.
All right. We have a motion in support to adopt a policy. Are there any questions or comments? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Barshap?
Yes.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes. All right. We have a policy, and I believe we have the will of the board to waive that 20% requirement. The next item is new business, consideration of Resolution 2024-22-G to approve Grant Traverse Metro Emergency Services Authority 2025 budget proposal. Who's going to speak first?
I'll just get started, but I'm going to quickly turn it over to Kim. She did a lot of the heavy lifting on this budget. The process was maybe just a little bit different this year, just with my involvement. We did, you'll see in your packet, we identified our mission, our vision. Our challenges for 2025 with putting the budget together, some of these remain the same as previous years. However, recruitment and retaining quality personnel definitely remains a high priority with the continued need to attract additional part-time firefighters, providing our employees with competitive wages and benefit packages, respect with the demand for emergency services personnel. We think we did that with this budget. We did give them what we thought was a fair raise. That does keep them at a good point within the scale and helps us to be competitive. Remaining committed to our staffing model that meets the need of our growing community and calls for service, we did apply for a safer grant to increase our daily staffing for one additional firefighter daily, so there would be three additional firefighters. However, that was a grant that was applied for. We did not address staffing, additional full-time staffing in the 2025 budget. If we get the grant, we'll be excited about that. That'll be something we'll have to plan for in '26, you know, in future budgets start paying for, but for this particular budget, there's no increase in full-time staffing. We also looked at having to implement an attainable replacement schedule for our essential frontline apparatus. The continued goal we have is to standardize our fleet and lower the overall age, hopefully purchase some new apparatus, and reduce risk and provide operational efficiencies. We feel that we're on track for that, a little bit more to come with that. Also, we identified, you know, our facilities are a concern, are developing a master facility plan, accounting for our existing and future facilities with consideration of our growth, service delivery, and best practices. Additionally, we do have to identify an equitable funding mechanism along with guidelines to ensure success. So those challenges remain. There's some aspects of that addressed in the budget, but much more in the future when it comes to large renovations, new stations, and things of that order. And then, again, just reacting, responding to increased building in homes, apartments, assisted living, facilities within the townships. That's something that does impact not only us operationally, it does impact the workload in our fire prevention bureau and inspectional services. So again, we're reacting, responding to that, trying to find ways to do things a little bit better, streamlining, using technology, but again, no additional full-time staffing at this time. So with that, I'll have Kim take over and talk a little bit about the numbers for the budget.
Hello, everyone. On the next page, you can kind of see at the bottom of the page the fund balance and millage history. This is a, once again, a 2.75 mil budget. You can see it allows us to keep a healthy fund balance. The next page shows the next taxable value allocation, which shows by township what each township's commitment would be dollar-wise. The change from the previous year is, in appreciation, is about 10%. So we will be working within that appreciation. Then the next two pages, or, yeah, the next three, two pages, three pages, is the detailed budget revenue expenditure report. Nothing big to highlight there. The general fund budget is pretty much a break-even budget. We do anticipate putting about $171,000 into our fund balance in the PIF, and we're trying to save money towards some new capital expenditures. The next few pages you'll see are a 10-year debt obligations, followed by a 10-year capital budget. Those are simply estimates we have as far as apparatus replacement and what type of loans we would need to take out to purchase those. And we're, you know, obviously, we've spent a lot of time trying to evaluate our capital needs and how we can fund those for the future. So then that brings us to, I had put at each of your spots a for the future. So then that brings us to, I had put at each of your spots, a revised budget by Cost Center. There was, it was pointed out to me in last night's meeting that I had a formula area in the increase-decrease, which doesn't really affect the overall dollars. It's just for informational purposes. But that is, the Cost Center budget is what we're asking the townships to approve, which has been approved by the Metro Board. So are there any questions on the budget?
I'll make the motion that we approve the 2.75 mils for the metro.
Support.
All right. We have a motion and support to approve the budget and the implied 2.75 mils.
Okay.
All right. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your support. And if you'll excuse us, we're going to go to Acme Township for the board meeting this evening.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good, Kevin Chief.
There's no way to get there from here, you know.
Just photos of the new engine under the
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Next item under new business is consideration of authorizing the township engineer to prepare an RFP for the Copper Ridge Trailhead project. You want to speak to that, John?
Yeah, just a little background on this. So this is related to the Commons Natural Area. When Copper Ridge Plan Unit Development went in, there was originally an area that was supposed to be the trailhead. It never really formed what happened because the, it took so many years to kind of build out that PUD. People just started using the point that was kind of towards the back where now West Front Primary Care is located. There hadn't been buildings back there. So that was kind of the de facto trailhead. That was never the intended trailhead. So now with West Front Primary Care in there, they've it, they, owners and developers of Copper Ridge want to see that kind of informal trailhead go away and have us go back to where the original area was. It's actually kind of back behind the surgery center. If you go right into Copper Ridge and you take a right, you go straight back and on the left side, there was some spaces that were allocated. So this is in an effort to identify, improve that a little bit more in terms of the parking and in making it clear that this is a, provide a pathway that goes up into the Commons that will get people using that trailhead and that other one will kind of will be closed off at some point here. So this was been reviewed by the Parks and Rec Commission and Gordy Frazier has helped with the design. And we've worked with some of the trail users out there. So now the next step is to kind of go through the RFP process so that hopefully we get this constructed by years end.
Question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Biking, walking, or all, whatever?
All of it, yeah. And this is going to fit into the, to some extent, this is part of the overall plan that we have for the Commons Natural Area to redo the the trails. And so this is a one, one little segment to that. There'll be obviously a lot more, but this just at least gets us to identify the proper trailhead location.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize a township engineer to prepare final design and specifications for an RFP for the Copper Ridge Trailhead project.
Support.
We have a motion and support to prepare an RFP for the Copper Ridge Trailhead project. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. Next item is consideration of bids for carpet and floor cleaning in the Garfield Township office. And Derek gathered the bids, but has had a conflict, so he could not be here tonight. The tile cleaning, Contemporary is the people who are cleaning our offices now who've done a very good job. And I almost forget that they're here because we never have any problems. But they they did clean the tile before and did a very good job. We were, I would think I would like to see them back here on a quarterly basis. That should be fine. And then in terms of the carpet cleaning, I don't know if we want to do that on a quarterly or twice yearly bid, but Modernistic was the most attractive bid.
Question for you.
Yeah.
The Contemporary cleaning, when they clean the tile, do they seal the grout and seal the tile?
Yes.
Each time that they do it?
Yep. They scrub with vinegar and steam to remove everything?
Yeah, because it doesn't say that on their bid that they're going to seal it.
I will.
They'll probably do it as they've been doing it, but.
Yeah, I will make sure they continue to do that.
Okay. Well, we want it sealed.
Yep.
Yeah, because each, the other would build, have the grout and ceiling, where they do not have a ceiling on there.
It does say, so if you look at under quote items, item description, it does say first floor cleaning and grout sealing.
That's Modernistic.
That's Modernistic.
Okay, I thought that's the one you wanted to go with.
No, this, he's talking about the Contemporary cleaning going with the tile cleaning.
Okay.
But there's nothing in there about the ceiling.
Right.
Yeah. You think quarterly is the way to go on it?
Um.
Carpet and?
I would.
When is that the other, when is Contemporary, how often is Contemporary going to do it?
That would be.
Yearly?
In the past, it really held up very well for more than a year. So I I don't know if we wanted to.
Once a year, twice a year?
Yeah.
For the tile?
I think twice a year would be more than sufficient.
But is this bid for twice a year or just once a year?
It is any way you want to do it.
Well, it
It's 1750, so is that 17, so it's 34, $3,500 a year?
Oh, I see what you're saying. I think that is once. But as I said, it's, it does, it doesn't show signs of dirt when it's cleaned.
Are they doing it once a year now or more than once?
Less than once. It's been more than a year, it's been more than a year since it was done.
So do you feel that once a year is enough?
I believe it is.
Okay.
Probably in the springtime, just after winter, salt is tracked through.
So you're looking at Contemporary for the tile cleaning and Modernistic for the carpet cleaning. How often for Modernistic? Twice a year or once a year?
Well, their bid has twice a year for carpet cleaning for Modernistic. Do we get a discount for that?
Modernistic does have a break for cleaning the carpet twice a year.
All right, I'm confused here a little bit. Why do we have two different bids? This one's quarterly and this one's yearly? We don't have one for twice a year? This is the, well, this is twice a year. Jesus, these are confusing.
Well, only on the carpet twice a year. Modernistic's bid, as I understand it, is for tile cleaning and cleaning the carpet twice a year. It's 385894.
That's what I'm confused about, yeah. So that would be 385894, but this is quarterly under comment number 10 on that one. That's where I'm, that's where I'm confused.
If you like, we can bring that back in a couple of weeks when Derek's here to.
Yeah, I think because it's a little confusing.
Yeah, it was.
The way it's.
It is. And it was his plan to present this and then.
Can, is it, was it possible if we could table it until Derek's here?
I would say we will defer decision until two weeks from now.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
All right.
Good call.
Deferred. All right. So that brings us back to item nine, public comment. If there's any member of the public who would care to address the board?
No.
Please come to the podium and be so kind as to give us your name and address. There is no public comment. We will move on to other business. Is there any other business to come before the board today? Would there be any objections to adjourn?
No objection.
We are adjourned. Thank you.